K-State, uh, K-State University sent a report. And basically the caption says, "We feel this information will be of particular interest to you as you complete the budget planning process because it will allow you to identify longer-term trends and compare the county's performance to that of the average Kansas County." So it's the 2017 Office of Local Government in the K-State Research and Extension Office. The Web Fund Committee has approved grant applications. Lincoln Area Chamber of Commerce, $1,200. City of Barnard, $1,000. Lincoln Elementary School, $5,452.64. Lincoln County Historical Society, $2,000. And correspondence from Tumbleweed Interior Architecture and Design. "Hi Dawn, I was in contact with Lincoln Park Manor about a possible remodel that may be happening and was directed to you as the county is the property owner. If I can be of assistance, please let me know." Rhea Mater. And that's all of it.
Okay, are we ready to act on the minutes? The minutes from last Monday and on Friday.
Are you going to do one at a time?
I don't care. We can or we can do them both. Whichever you prefer.
Probably should have them separately because she wasn't here Friday.
Agreed.
Okay, do we have any corrections for the April 24th? Minutes.
I have an addition, not a correction. I would like, um, under the RFP, to please include for a full discussion and then the commission meeting link. So that if people are wondering about the discussion, they could audibly hear the whole thing. I think that'd be important. I can send that to you, Dawn. The link itself so that you could just insert it.
That's not part of your meeting though. That's not a formal document. So we should not be needing to it because it's not our record. It's your record. If you want to put a disclaimer on your Facebook page as to where to find it, you can put it. But that link, that, that video that you're taking there is not in Lincoln County record. We don't retain ownership of it.
True.
So it should not be cited in the minutes. Otherwise, we're taking ownership of it.
Okay. Do either of you plan on letting the newspaper know that we're recording the meetings?
I think he's been here. He surely knows it.
And including it in the minutes so that the public knows that the meetings are being recorded?
Well, I think there again, we are not recording them.
Okay, so maybe we should just, maybe we could just add that Commissioner Alexis Flug is tape-recording the meetings. That way that somebody knows.
Is that a problem?
Sure.
You can do it.
It'd be great.
Is that okay with you two?
I think it's important that people know by now. The people that read the paper and don't have any access to anything else might not be aware. And this would at least get it in the paper for them to have notice.
I'm also gonna add a disclaimer that it's not Lincoln County public record.
Sure, put it under my name. That's fine. I'd be happy to take credit.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I would move to approve the minutes from April 24th.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and second to approve April 24th. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Posed. Motion is carried. April 28th.
I'd move to approve the minutes from April 28th.
I would second them. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Posed.
I abstain.
Uh, let's take care of the web requests from the web board. Lincoln Chamber of Commerce for bike, for the bike across America to help defray expenses was $1,200. The City of Barnard is doing upgrades to their community building, $4,000. The elementary school is purchasing filtered water fountains, I believe, that are, can also be used to fill water bottles, I believe. So they had a dual purpose. They will be, there will be some in the elementary school, but there are also, this cost includes some for the junior senior high school, $5,452.64. Lincoln County Historical Society is getting a printer, a computer and software they're updating. This is to allow them to have a more accurate and accessible to the public inventory of stuff that is being stored or has been given to the Lincoln County Historical Society. It was pointed out to us that when family members came in and asked to see the things that they had donated or loaned to the society, sometimes it was difficult to find them because a computer program would not allow them to access the location of them. So those are the four requests. There is still some money left in this economic benefit fund to be dispersed in 2017. I believe it's around, well, it's between $2,000 and $3,000, I believe, as I remember. I don't think that.
It says at the bottom of that front page. I think you heard that.
Oh, yeah.
May have been in the notes too.
Yeah. I'll find it. Well, I don't see the minutes on here, Dawn. With this.
I think it's in the, in the front of that letter. And it may have been on the, they, you know, the minutes. I think they do have the minutes.
Yeah, it wasn't the minutes. I saw them.
I thought it said, it must've been in the minutes.
I think it was in the minutes. I think it's $2,999, but I'm not gonna swear to it. But it's somewhere around there. Do I have a motion to approve the dispensing of this money?
I would move.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Been moved and second to dispense money from the Web Fund to these four organizations. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Okay, is that all the stuff we had besides?
I believe so.
The fiscal and that?
I have one salary increase.
Oh, okay.
Um, Kim Zikafus has completed her first year of service at the Sheriff's Department. She is the part-time for a dispatcher that works.
Oh, okay.
Is this other thing?
Yeah. Okay. Kim has effect, uh, completed a, a year, you said, Dawn?
Yes.
A year, which would be a 25 cent increase, another 25 cent increase. Or she's a part-time dispatcher. Do I have a motion to increase her salary? You want to see this? You want to see this? I would move that we increase Kim's salary 25 cents on the completion of the one year of employment. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and second to increase Kim's, or give Kim a 25 cent re-increase for one year of service. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Posed. Motion is carried. Do you have anything else today, Dawn, for us?
Uh, no. It will come later with the openings.
Yeah, with opening of the bids.
And then, um, we have one in the Highway Department of Status Change, but I won't have that code.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I have several concerns that I would like to address here. I didn't pull the dates on these, but we have requested county council on four separate issues and we haven't heard back on any of them. And I believe the first one, I went ahead and voted for the Web Fund approval today because we haven't heard back on any of the, the situation. But we have two conflicts of interest. We've requested counsel. We have a road closure that we've requested counsel and we have a public referendum. And I know the public referendum was just this last meeting. But the first conflict of interest with the Web Fund, this was over a month ago that we requested counsel on that because we have, um, a commissioner on the Web Fund, which that's how it's set up. But the question about the conflict of interest that came from the public was, the person on the Web Fund is approving as a committee member and then they're also doubly approving as a commissioner. So we have yet to establish, I know that I, I went along with it today. That's how it's been done. That's the precedent that Lincoln County has set for this situation. But I think it would be appropriate to truly get our legal opinion on this. We have another conflict of interest with Lincoln Park Manor that was discussed. Um, I guess I need to make a formal motion for this because it was never made into a motion. So I move that we seek counsel regarding conflict of interest with commissioners and Lincoln Park Manor contingent upon spending county dollars with this facility and business.
Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. I will address it. Since it was myself that was accused of a conflict of interest, I'm beginning to wonder how I am going to set vote on the mill levy since I am a Lincoln County taxpayer and by setting that mill levy, it affects how much money I have to pay to this county. To me, that is a conflict of interest because in my, uh, for my benefit, I would want that mill levy as low as it could possibly be, whether we are able to fund services in this county or not. So, you know, when we start talking about conflict of interest, we're going to limit ourselves on who's going to be available to, to do some of these activities. Terry operates as a volunteer for EMS. Is he going to have to be ruled ineligible to vote on any EMS stuff, which will also be part of the budget? I guess I feel that, uh, my conflict of interest at the nursing home because I have relatives that I am responsible for taking care of their care is pretty minute to the other conflict of interests I have in setting the mill levy. So I think this is, uh, I'm not sure where this can go. And I'm not sure how the other counties in this state operate on setting mill levies because I'm quite familiar with a few of the commissioners that are rather large farmers in some of these surrounding counties. So.
You said you're not sure how this can go?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know who's going to, who's going to operate this county if the people that.
Not about the, not about the mill levy, about.
Well, that, that's the same thing.
No.
I have an interest in the mill levy as well as I have an interest in the nursing home.
Right. No, I'm talking about the conflict of interest with personal investments in money to an organization or, I shouldn't call it an organization, a private business that is.
I don't have any ownership in that business. Absolutely none.
Uh, I was just.
All I am doing is trying to protect the assets of my family. To be right honest about it is what I'm trying to do. That's my responsibility according to the court is to protect the assets of the people or family members in my family. And that's, that's the only thing I can do.
The accusation wasn't that it's illegal. It was a question. And then my response is, we should seek legal counsel. But you don't feel you need legal counsel to, to configure that?
No. I, I don't, I don't, I don't understand how I could even have a conflict because I have nothing to do with that business. All I'm doing is taking care of a, a family member.
Okay. Moving on, uh, the, the road closure has been several weeks too, as far as getting a definite on that and what the county's responsibility is there. And last week, the Highway Department said they have not acted on the road closure because we haven't really figured out anything legally with this situation and how we passed two resolutions simultaneously. So, uh, that and then of course we have the public referendum question now about the vote on doing an RFP. So I think given the situation that we have a lapse in time figuring out some of these things and, and I see we didn't start with the new agenda today on May 1st as we discussed to do old business. I don't know if we're gonna do that.
I think that you guys need to make a motion to approve whether.
I don't think we ever.
Last time we interviewed Terry, he said he was, he wanted some time to think about it and Al didn't want to say anything, so.
I don't think we ever officially changed our agenda.
Okay, well.
I think we discussed it.
I move to adopt an agenda based on parliamentary procedure.
Do I have a second? The motion dies for lack of a second.
And with the situation I discussed regarding lapse in time requesting county council, I understand she's busy, but we do need to have a forward movement with some of these situations. I move that we request county council to attend commission meetings on a regular basis, which she asked for a motion if that was going to be the case. So I so move.
What do you call a regular basis?
Weekly. Not necessarily end of the month meetings where we're just doing payroll, but if she attended on a weekly basis, that would be nice because we would have a week follow-up to get answers to some of the questions. Just like today, here we are approving Web Fund money, but over a month ago, we weren't sure. We were asking her to give us counsel so that we could decide if that needed to be revamped as far as how the, the committee is set up.
You made a motion to.
I moved to have county council.
What's your, what's your motion?
I moved to have county council present at the regularly scheduled weekly meetings.
You already.
Weekly Monday meetings because the, the other one falls on different days.
You understand that their court schedule on Mondays too, don't you?
I, I am sure that she's.
You understand that her schedule changes from Sunday night to Monday.
Oh, I'm sure that there are gonna be times when she cannot come at all, but I'm afraid that leaving a month or more lapse in some of these decisions is detrimental to our ability to do our weekly business.
There's something that you guys need to know. County coun, county counselor is not a paid position, so you will need to pay her if you want to demand her to be a present. She is the county attorney. And with that, there is no statute that governs that she must be the county counselor. And this county has never compensated the county counselor. Many counties do.
Well, it's my understanding that we also have the choice of county council. We could choose any attorney to be our county council. So maybe that's something that we need to consider.
How much do you want to spend?
I don't have a dollar amount prepared in my head to say that we need to spend that, but I'm concerned about leaving months of gap time between a situation and a decision. She also indicated in her email to all of us that she would be willing to come if it was done by a formal motion. So that's what I'm exercising today.
I don't think she meant every week. I'm sitting here for the meeting.
I'm not suggesting that she needs to be present for the entire meeting. Like I said, I do understand that there's a schedule for her to keep outside of her dealings with this board. However, uh, of being present for one small portion of the meeting regularly would help us to get some of these answers before we need to make decisions without any kind of counseling.
I assume she's researching the question, but I don't know.
Well, I guess maybe we could have her come next Monday and visit with her about setting a regular time when she could attend these meetings. Again, I think compensation's gonna come into play. County councils do not come and sit for free, nor do they travel for free either. I have learned from my various other duties because of this commission.
If we're going to open up a job for county council, do we have to publish that?
I don't know. Sling County has separately. They have council. I don't know if any other smaller counties do or not. I know Montoya is Sling County. I don't know how they compensate you.
Al Jo, you still have a motion on the table?
Yeah, I do. Do I have a second? It dies for lack of a second. I would suggest that we have county council come next week if at all possible, schedule her in. Whenever she's available, please. Or county attorney, I guess I should call him.
Here's the correspondence to our board. "I have attached herein for your review the Kansas statute that sets forth responsibilities I have as county counselor for Lincoln County, Kansas. I have always made myself available when needed to discuss or assist with county business. I assume that this will remain the norm and it will be, it will not be necessary for me to attend the entirety of regularly scheduled meetings. If this has changed, please advise as it will be necessary for me to change my schedule. Thank you for your cooperation." And the, this is what the statute reads. Are you, are you familiar with the statute at all?
Yeah.
Oh, you are?
She sent it out, yes.
Oh, oh, do you remember anything about it?
I don't remember it off the top of my head.
But you're familiar with it?
I read it when she sent it out.
"The county counselor shall, when requested by the Board of Commissioners or when necessary, attend the meetings of such a board. Give advice upon all legal questions that arise and assist the board on all legal matters referred to the county counselor. Commence, prosecute or defend the cases which would be acting as county attorney simultaneously with county counselor. Draw all contracts and other papers required by the board. If applicable, perform duties provided by KSA 19716 and perform all duties in civil matters that have previously been required by law of the county attorney of the county." So Dawn, I'm sorry, but what you said earlier, I'm not getting that out of this statute because it refers to both county counselor and county attorney simultaneously in the wording. Just if, do you want me to send that to you? You probably got a copy when, when she sent that out. I just think it's very important that we've had a month, a month or more lapse in one of these and here we are making decisions without that, that critical information. associated with that for the end of this month? Is that a precedent for Lincoln County that we?
I don't think so. I think we'll have somebody who wants to attend for you.
Okay. I mean, I got a verbal discussion last week, but.
I don't think anybody has any objection to it.
You know, I'm reading that statute that you just quoted and you added the words county attorney in a portion of it that it doesn't appear in.
Where was that?
Um, which statute were you reading?
Under F, it says county attorney of the county when required by law.
No, you read county attorney up further.
No, I said county counselor shall. That's in the fir, very first sentence.
No, you, a couple of things up you said.
I'm sorry, anyone is welcome to look it up. It's KSA 19 dash 247.
Yes.
Under duties of county counselor. Sorry, I didn't cite it. That is the.
The commands prosecute and defend as cases require is where you added as county attorney. That is when she's defending you, you guys as an organization for the board. Because she defends you guys as a separate legal besides county attorney. You added in, in section C that the county attorney as county, which I think you phrased it, which is the county attorney.
I said which is, I think I said which is acting as county attorney. She's not gonna prosecute as the county counselor. She's going to prosecute as the county attorney.
No. No, she's doing that as, she's defending your actions is what she's doing. There's two separate things. As county attorney, she prosecutes and defends the laws of the state of Kansas against crimes against Lincoln County. As county counselor, she's defending crimes against the board of county commissioners.
So where are you getting the word prosecute in there?
Commence, prosecute, or defend as the case requires all civil suits or actions in which the county is interested in representing county general in matters of civil law. That's you guys...
So she'll file the prosecution papers is what you're saying, on behalf of the county, as the county counsel?
So, for example, if you wanted to sue Lincoln Park Banner for the back rent, she would prosecute that for you. That's a little bit different than her county attorney.
I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
And again, that bottom one is the same, in the same sense, because she's counseling you as an organization. And the county as an organization.
So, since we have a county attorney and we don't have a separate county counsel, do we have a resolution that appoints that? Because basically, what you're telling me is she's acting on good faith as a favor right now.
Exactly.
So...
I don't believe we've ever had a...
We don't have any legal paperwork on that. Were you, were you aware of this situation?
I was well aware.
Been that way forever. There's never been a separate counselor in our...
Sometimes we have good deals. And one of those good deals is that we're not paying her to be county counsel. She's basically doing it as part of her job as a county employee, so...
So you're not concerned that we voted to approve monies from the web fund? That we had a sitting question on the table for county counsel?
No, I'm not. Again, we all wear many hats in this county.
Have you been in the habit of making decisions with, without fulfillment of information based on requests for counsel?
Usually she has come across, when we have asked her, that she's provided us counsel when we needed it.
So have you ever put a hiatus on making a decision until you receive that counsel?
I suppose we, I'm sure we have, yeah.
So it's up to you as far as you're taking on the discretionary role of making decisions with or without your requested information, based on what you personally feel is important or doesn't need officially addressed?
I guess you can say that. Some of it has been done before, so... I can challenge anything you want to challenge. That's how lawyers make their money.
Come on in, Mike. You got something for us?
Come on. Executive session. Can we do that?
What?
Executive session.
Sure. If it's personnel. How long do you need?
Fifteen minutes.
How much?
Fifteen?
Okay.
Ten minutes?
Huh? Fifteen. We'll do fifteen. Fifteen's fine. We got it. Do you have a motion?
I would move to go to Doug's Personnel, or fifteen minutes on Personnel.
Do you have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. We'll go into executive session for fifteen minutes with Mike. Do you want to go upstairs, Mike, or do you want to do it here?
Whatever you do, let's sit.
Go ahead.
The two roads that are up by the lake, are very edge of the west end of the county. I believe one is called Norman, and the other one is slipping my mind. They have a, a community board for their little housing plan, I'll call it, the development there. And they had just expressed concern. It wasn't a negative comment, but they just said, "We haven't seen anyone driving around," because I think they frequently do see Russell County, maybe. And I don't know how your system is set up. You obviously have regions, I'm assuming. So when someone's on there, if you, do you have two people on at a time? And like, one takes one portion, one takes the other? Is that how?
We, the way we usually have, we usually have one city deputy, and we have a county deputy. The county deputy usually works from two to two. And they're, I explain to them, they're expected to, to...
Circulate?
Circulate the whole county. There's no specific areas, unless we have a specific problem, a specific area of the county, then we'll, we'll focus on that. Otherwise, it's up to their discretion to patrol.
Okay.
And also, they're supposed to be out there. But you got to realize, if we only have one deputy out, we try to keep the deputies centralized in the county in case we have an emergency situation like the Lincoln area, so they can respond at, at a quicker time. But they do get out there, and I will put out a memo stating that they request more frequent patrols out there. Let's see what we can do.
Sure. It wasn't, you know, anything negative. They were just saying, "We haven't seen anyone in a while, in a while." So I said, "I would just mention, maybe if they could just..."
Usually in the wintertime, it's real, real quiet out there. We try to get out there more often in the summertime when the lakes open.
Right, right.
So, I'll, I'll let my guys know, try to get out there more often.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Michael out there? Bob?
I didn't see him. Two guys up there earlier, and Lincoln left, and Derek gets out.
I think it was Buster.
Oh, it could have been. I've never seen him before.
I think it was Buster.
It'd be another match there.
His name just comes to mind. Over. Jerry over.
Is that Jerry?
I think so.
That's the scene, huh?
Yeah, the bus driver.
Come on in, Michael.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Hello.
Any dry spots out there this morning?
Haven't found any yet. Don't sound like you're going to be for several mornings. Pretty soggy.
Wednesday again or something? I think they're talking.
Cross our fingers and hopefully it stays south and east of us, but...
You can't be pushing snow.
You got to be very thankful we didn't have that. That would have compounded everything immensely. For sure.
What do you got today for us?
With your all approval, we have moved Stephen Weber from the shop to truck driver. His request. And in order to do that, you'd need to adjust his wages down fifty cents.
Are you aware of that?
Yes, he is aware of that.
I assume he already has his CDL.
Yes, yes. Go from three fifty-five to three oh five, or thirteen fifty-five to thirteen oh five.
Okay, Don, is it, Don? There she is. Thirteen oh five is...
That's correct.
Okay, we need to reclassify Stephen Weber in high, a highway employee from mechanic to truck driver.
Correct.
And also set the wage at thirteen oh five. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
I'll second.
Been moving second to reclassify Stephen Weber. Salary will be at thirteen oh five now. You with me, Don?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, I do have a question. Are you planning on replacing him with a new employee, or do you have something rotating?
We have some ideas in the works. We got several logistics to figure out before we can finalize what our plan is there.
Do those ideas include a new hire or internal?
Eventually. There has been some interest of possibly a current employee to transfer. We're not to a point where we're making a decision yet.
We're still an employee short, Don.
Correct.
Questions? Any others questions? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried.
The road maintenance agreement with Mr. Snyder, have we?
I believe we've, how do we do it today?
Look it over and see if anything needs changed, added, deleted.
It appeared to be all right with me.
My only question is, are, are we assuming that under this section 1A that Schneider shall purchase and haul material and then bear responsibility for a period of five years? Are we assuming as the county to take on responsibility at that point in time? And that's how I'm reading it, but I'm not sure what you intended with that.
I guess that would need to be answered by you three, of what you intend.
I think the five years is to see if the sand would actually hold up on the road. I guess if the sand does hold up on the road, then I don't have a problem maintaining it permanently.
And I think it kind of explains, under future maintenance, county will provide routine maintenance on said road comparable to other similarly situated roads.
Yeah, as far as letting the road top and keeping it the best we can, yes. When we're doing other roads in the area.
If we were doing gravel, we would maintain it from that day forward. But being it's sand, and we don't know why it's going to work up there, which I'm doubtful it's going to work, but it might. Is the reason for the five-year view.
Have you heard from him?
I have not.
Well, what is your wish?
You okay? I've moved to approve the road maintenance agreement with Steve Snyder.
Do you have a second?
A second.
We moved second to approve the road agreement. Mr. Snyder. Questions?
I know this is a terrible question, but I have to ask it. When are you looking at getting out there to prep the road?
Is it going to rain again Wednesday?
I think that's, soon as we can get on it is our intentions.
Yeah. Say, I told Blade Man to keep an eye on it when he thought we could work.
Will it only take just him? Because don't you have to take the roller out there, so you have two people?
Blade and the roller probably on the start.
Okay.
Here's the original, let me just...
Okay.
How many copies do you have signed on?
What we do too, before you have a copy to spare.
I have one.
I have one.
Good. Okay.
He can have an original.
Anyway, any other questions? Well, I think that's, I hope he understands that, given the kind of weather we've had right now, it's not going to be possible for us to spare the machines or the, the guys to do anything until we get some of this mess in southeast county cleaned up. Yeah, you say we've got that, and now we're going to have all the roads... Yeah, they all have to be graded, yeah. Be bladed and worked on now, so... Okay, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried.
Do you want me to just give him a call and see if he would be willing to come in and sign his part of it?
Yes. Ah, you can...
I don't know if they'll even sign from Don.
In front of a notary.
Yeah, I'd, I'd leave it at the clerk's office, and then he can sign there, and it can be notarized at the same time. Any other? What else you got, Michael? I guess we just started.
Here a couple of weeks ago, we did visit about finding a replacement for our well truck. And that truck at Clay Center, of course, it's sold out from under us. I've done some looking at a place over there at Solomon, Chuck Henry's. I've looked there. I've looked at the Penske trucks. I've looked at through Kenworth, and I've looked through Dunham's. Most of those companies will not transfer a truck to this location even for inspection, and they're scattered all over the United States. How would you guys like us to proceed with that hurdle in the way? Just wait until there's a potential of something close for inspection? You know, you get really restricted on numbers and price and quality when you're dealing with whether you're going to California or Southern Oklahoma to inspect a truck.
Yeah, I think it'd have to be within a reasonable distance.
What you're saying, there's none out there locally or within?
There was one down at Great Bend, but we didn't go look at it. It was, I think, thirty-four thousand in that neighborhood, and I think you guys thought that might've been a little high. Good majority that I have seen running that range of twenty-seven thousand to thirty-five thousand range. When they're anywhere from upper two hundred thousand to five hundred thousand miles in that price range. A lot of them come with a box on it, a van-style truck. Then on top of that, depending on who we buy it from, we're gonna have the expense of the frame and driveline changes to get it to cab to axle and total frame length.
What do we get for those state dump trucks? Do you remember?
Oh, I think they're around fifteen to seventeen thousand, I believe. I'd have to look for sure. I'm not positive. I can look that up, see what we pay for them.
They use any, state using any single axle trucks at all, you know?
Haven't for years.
Well, the truck we had was questionable pulling about the back of our some of that.
Yeah, it was a good look for it.
Maybe we oughta start looking more towards state trucks. You'd have to change their bed around a little bit, but you can get more trucks for a lot less money.
Potentially go tandem, that's what you're saying?
It would certainly be more than heavy enough.
Yes. Any other questions on that?
Think we need to look. I don't, I don't fly into California.
No, I prefer not to myself. Busy enough the way it is.
Got something else?
Yeah, last Tuesday evening, we had a tree catch on fire at Fiftieth and Kiowa, around Kiowa just east of Fiftieth. And fire department camped on it overnight till the next morning when we could get a plan in the daylight. And we ended up pulling that tree over with a motor grader, large cottonwood, after the power company, Western Cooperative, came out and they trimmed it all down for us. And then it was on Meyerland and Cattle property, and they took their tree saw and cut around the base of it and we pulled it over. And when the power company was there, they went ahead and cleaned an area out through there for their power right of way. And we assisted in removing the limbs and trunks once they were down on the ground. I guess one of the landowner had some words with Bob on Thursday. Wasn't happy with what was done, I guess, but power company removed all the trees on the right of way and off the right of way. And we just assisted in the cleanup and the trees that were over the road and whatnot, except for the tree that was on fire. But we did bring that one down.
It was on, was it on the right of way or?
No, the tree that was on fire was not on the right of way.
How did it get on fire?
Burning some brush that was in a drainage ditch.
Did the power company call you?
Did they call me? No. They were contacted through dispatch, I believe, initially because the power went out. They'd already taken out the power lines and and then the fire department arranged for them to come out the next morning to assist in that.
I mean, okay, so that was Sylvan's fire department?
Correct.
And the county, the county came the next day?
Correct. Actually, I went out that night.
For the fire?
For the fire and to see what our options were about, so.
So I'm not sure you said had words over what?
Oh, he said that he hadn't authorized anybody to cut those trees and stuff. Well, the power line cut them except, like I say, the one that was burning that night and stuff. And said he wasn't authorized to pile the trees for repiling them, nobody well, their operator had told us that's where they to pile them. So that was all we had to go by. And then he comes up and said, we're gonna have to hold them all out of there, this or that, and was all upset about it, so.
So he's upset that you cut trees and piled them?
Yeah, power company-
Yeah, we didn't cut any.
Power, highway company cut all the trees down, but we cleaned them up, was helping clean them up. And his employer told us to pile them where we piled them.
And he was helping also with his equipment?
He was there piling trees when we got there.
The whole time?
So. But he said nobody had told us to pile them there. I don't know. Your employee told us that's where to pile them, so that's all I-
The power line employee?
No.
Meyerland and Cattle employee, Bob. He was there the whole time. We were there cleaning up and moving trees and everything too, so.
What did you do, send the tree crew out, the tree cutting crew?
No, I was out there. My initial intention was to down the one tree.
Yeah, the one on fire?
Yes.
But you did that with the fire department?
No.
No?
Highway department, we did it.
You sent your tree cutting crew?
No, myself and the blade operator. And Jared Hines, he was over there to help to, help move the cables. So there was just three of us there.
Is there, are we looking at a liability issue?
I don't see how, but based on what we did, but.
Employee would've been a representative of his.
And he was in contact with one of them a couple of times by phone. And he did show up on site once, but left before I could visit with him.
I would say if their employee told you weren't piling them, I don't think there were an issue. I don't see how that could possibly be an issue. Their employee was representing them, so. And he was involved in the piling, so.
That's all I have for today.
You got anything, Tara? Alexis?
I don't think so.
Was the rain fairly general throughout the county?
Yeah, there were some variants, I believe. What'd you end up having, inch thirty?
Yeah, I had about an inch and a half there at home.
I had two thirty-five at my house.
Well, we said about three down at Westfold area.
Have we heard from Northwest?
I think definitely anything, or.
No snow, we heard of?
I think we were just very, very missed it.
Yeah, must've been pretty close. Yep. No major breakdowns or equipment problems?
No, we received the new Skidsteer Mini last week finally. So took over those.
Okay, I guess nobody has anything.
Trying to clean up more trash and stuff out of pipes and bridges and ditches. There last week again, kept working on tap.
We're still hauling it and piling it? What are we gonna do with those piles eventually?
Hope maybe they dry up someday and after we can burn them, or so we have to try to spread them out and bury them or something and just kinda get them out of our way here, we'll kinda let nature see what the weather does to it, if it dries out and stuff. How we handle it from there on.
We ran out of room to pile, or?
No, we got plenty of room there.
Plenty of room.
Bust of crop residue, is that what it is?
Yeah, corn stalks, myel stalks, wheat stubble. That's about all it's been. Oh, there's a couple places on Bang Creek and the bridge we've had a few tree lamps and stuff in there. Other than that, it's, they're all been just a residue from no-tail stuff that's washed in there and plugged them up.
Did it ever get dry enough where we got to all the areas?
We got over about everything. I was working there Thursday, or it started raining there some, showering down here in the about shady bend of the bottoms down there. We got a little more to clean up down there, but all the dirt around there, we better get out of there before we get in trouble down in there. Plus, our main roads are all cleaned out now. Hopefully, I don't win. Always been kinda trying to pull what they could out of ditches and gravel and stuff and trying to patch roads up, but we're gonna have to haul a lot of material. When it gets dry, we'll get into a pit or haul them, so.
Do we have gravel piled down Thames and?
Yeah. And building, yeah. Pile both those places. So.
If it dries out enough that we can get into a pit and get to some gravel, we should be to the point where we're getting ready to gravel OS thirty-three. Getting very close. Couple more days worth of work is what he said Thursday, correct?
Yeah, I talked to him Thursday night, and he said a couple more days, well, then it'll rain.
Yeah, Pepper Ridge.
What about the, that driveway into Gary's, we can grade that too, or?
Anything that's disturbing.
They just got the pipe and got those entrances in for his drive, and the one across the road for Jim to get in to farm there. So they just got the pipe and got them put in that day.
Okay.
But I don't know now when it'll be before he get back in there again.
Throw pond up there.
Yeah.
They're making progress on OS forty-five also, got west by one drove.
Oh, do they? Good.
They should hopefully stay on good schedule as long as they don't have to pull and do something else.
What about the Westfall asphalt where that water, did it are we gonna have to do some repairs on the asphalt, or did it hold?
Yeah, it's gonna be okay. Looked at the hole where it got through that pipe, we had to work on the pipe, but just right out to the edge of the asphalt, so. Didn't damage any of it.
Okay. Anything else, Bob?
Yeah, I think that's about all I have, actually. Oh, I need to go back, I was up to Lake Estates up there and looked at their roof and stuff last week. And it looked fine then, but I need to go up there after the rain here, because it was just as smooth as these tabletops when I was there, so.
Maybe he had just gone up?
So I need to go back and see what it looks like now right after the rain. Looked like we might, maybe can sprinkle a little around their dumpster area there, or sand or something around there a little bit, but the rest of it didn't look that bad, so. Double check it again now.
This is just a reminder, but the bridge priority list, I would like to see when you get to that. I ordered my map, so I can look at it myself. And if you guys are gonna do a planning session of some sort-
We talked a little bit, we haven't got too far on.
Just to keep that on the table for old business.
Anything else?
I don't have either.
Thanks, guys. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good sunshine over. All right, we'll take a short break. Ten o'clock, we will open bids for abandoned cemeteries. Okay, it's ten o'clock, we will open the bids. We have four of them. Okay, Alexis, you wanna start?
Bid for six cemeteries mowed and trimmed, all six, at designated times, four times. Does that mean four times for the summer?
Yeah.
Yes.
Twelve hundred dollars. Am I reading names here? Am I reading names here? What does that say? Glass?
Don's Glass.
Glass.
Don's Glass. Yeah, it'd be Don Howe.
Carrie? Uh, mowing all six cemeteries and trimming would be total of three thousand. And then they wanted two hundred and fifty dollars extra, one-time deal to cut and haul off the tree branches. Dan Bates, Daniel Bates.
It doesn't say how many times?
Four.
It's their bidding four times. Four total, okay.
Any additional one that we need done, they want another seven hundred and fifty dollars. Occasionally, if we get a lot of rain, we allow for additional.
Myra, Myra, I'm sorry, Myra Marenhagen, seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. And I have Todd Herring, sixteen hundred dollars. Okay. We have bids of three thousand, seventeen fifty, twelve hundred, and sixteen hundred. What is your wish?
I don't know, twelve hundred is low, I guess.
Probably a good bid.
Do I have a motion to find it?
I assume they've been looking, so...
Yeah.
Is that individual mowed for the cemetery?
Mowed and trimmed, huh?
Is that individual mowed before on the cemetery?
Has he?
Don's.
Yeah, I mean, is he?
He hasn't for us.
He hasn't for us, no.
Not since I've been here.
Do we have a motion? Did you move?
I would move to hire Don Howe, the mowed cemetery.
Awesome.
Twelve hundred. Been moving second to hire Don Howe, winning bid for mowing the cemeteries, twelve hundred dollars. Questions? It does say mow and trim too. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Are you, are you this?
Are you ready for me already?
Well, we could be, I guess. I don't think anybody is standing in your way. I'm Al Jill Wallace.
Liz Winkler.
Terri Bench.
Nice to meet you. How are you doing? Uh, what I have here is the budget for the Council on Aging and the Lincoln and the Sylvan Senior Centers. Now, I don't know where they came up with the seventeen budget. But I went back through and recalculated everything basically according to what the actual costs were. All right, and so this is what I'd actually come up with. On the Council on Aging, we have made some changes that cut the budget back some. We were able to save quite a bit of money on what the telephone, internet packages, by packaging stuff together. Let's see, the Council on Aging will be paying that, but the Lincoln Senior Center will look at the rent accordingly. Several other things that we managed to put together, save a few dollars here and there. Teresa had told me that, I think the mill levy was set at around seventy-five thousand.
Well, actually, it said it. It's, we can do up to two mills, which would be approximately a hundred and two or three thousand, but last year we cut it back to, we only allocated seventy-five thousand because they had some cash on hand and they weren't spending as much money.
Okay.
Only, the increase was due to the fact that evaluation had increased so much in the last few years.
It didn't actually reduce it, I don't know.
Mm-hmm. And you can read through there. I won't sit here and read it to you. If you have any questions on anything, pretty much everything that's there are, you know, irregular monthly expenses. There's not a whole lot of room there to work with. I think the only new things added in there for this year would be, they're wanting to replace all the lighting in the Sylvan and Lincoln buildings, which is something that's just way overdue to be done. You know, the fixtures are just falling apart to the point that you can't fix them, you know? So, I'm trying to think if there's any other major repairs in there. The two things that we needed to kind of look forward, look to in the future is at the Lincoln Senior Center, the freezer, the big commercial freezer and refrigerator are getting extremely old and temperamental, so we're kind of betting that those are gonna have to be replaced pretty soon. And then on Sylvan's page down at the bottom, there's a list there of improvements that they're wanting to make. Their north wall needs repaired, we don't have any actual price on that at the moment, though. The window awning on the west side. They do do the quilting there, that type of thing. They're thinking of another sewing machine at some point in time here. Their computer desk and chair, and upgrade their coffee maker. What else? Give you guys a second to look and see if you have any questions in there. Any questions? Any writer?
Don't write them all down.
What's the total amount to be received in eighteen?
That I don't know. Yeah, I don't know that that's been said, has it?
Okay, the other question is that the amount of carryover you're going to have?
None. Actually, at this point, for twenty seventeen, there was, I think, one point four, four mills is what it was.
No, 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 I meant how many, how much cash had the Council on Aging have available to spend? That what, I mean, what's their balance gonna, estimated balance gonna be at the end of two thousand seventeen? I assume there will be a cash carryover some.
Right now, there's about thirty thousand left.
And that includes everything, checking, CDs, and whatever there is?
Well, the checking, uh, checking balance was, this would have been at the end of March, correct? Was thirteen hundred in the checking account. Sorry, forty-four thousand in the savings, and then thirty on CDs. So, you've actually got seventy-four.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
So, on the twenty seventeen budget, though, I consider approximately the seventy-five thousand that's coming to the senior centers and the Council on Aging. And we're looking at eighty-six in expenses, so, yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna, and that's why we, that's why we did not allocate as much.
Okay, because you're wanting this spent down.
Just spend some of that, we thought it needed to be spent down.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that's, but you're still way under, you're gonna be under the two mills even with this projected ninety-nine thousand dollar budget request.
Right.
But we just kind of need to have an idea how much more money we need to influx into that, you know? Do you need the whole ninety-nine, or is there some carryover there that you can use? And it appears that there will be maybe some.
Okay. Let me ask you then, because, I mean, we felt that there should be some carryover because of major, you know, major expenses or repairs. Where do you think that should be at?
Well, you know, if what's gonna break. I mean, that's kind of the question.
Exactly, you know? If we only knew.
I don't think you need a hundred percent, I guess, you know, a hundred percent carryover to fund your budget, but certainly you probably ought to have from four to six months, I would guess, to fund in case something drastically happens, you know?
What's the county's limit on a carryover for a fiscal year?
I don't think we have a limit, do we, Don?
No, we just have a minimum of five percent.
Yeah.
Five percent minimum?
Not issue, you're jacking where you're payable and accounts payable until distribution occurs.
Makes sense.
So, I, you know, I guess that's, that's kind of why I asked that question, was how much carryover is in there?
Right.
You know, I don't, I don't know that you need seventy-five percent of the budget to carry over, but I do think you need some, you know? She said five percent. I want you to have a little bit more than that, you know?
Well, because my, my thinking was a year, so...
Yeah, no.
And so, obviously, you don't think there should be that much there?
No, no, I don't, I don't, I don't think you should have enough carryover to fund your budget.
Okay.
But, because we're going to, going to put some, some money in, you know? But it appears that you're going to spend approximately twenty-five thousand from last year to, to make seventeen's budget.
Right.
To the end, you know? And if we only put that much in again, it looks like you're gonna have to spend another twenty-five thousand, so that's fifty thousand, so, you know, that's taking that seventy-five thousand down pretty fast.
Yeah.
You know, so, we're probably going to have to maybe look at trying to influx a little bit more money into that than seventy-five thousand. But we kind of, kind of didn't need to know how much you were spending so we can, we can budget. And before this, this is the first time we've ever seen a budget from the Council on Aging, so we kind of know what the money is that you're being spent.
Right.
So, that's kind of where I'm going.
Yeah, well, I believe this to be...
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not doubting your...
Thank you for bringing one, that's, that's a nice...
Because actually, the, the last ones that I saw were kind of, they weren't what I would call an actual budget. They were, well, we'll probably spend about this much on this and that much on that, so...
And a lot of that has to come back to the commissioners because at one time, we felt that when that mill levy was passed, it was set in stone, that that's how much we levy. But after we studied it a little, it said we could up to two mills, you know? It's the maximum.
So, you can adjust that.
So, we can adjust that down wherever we need to, you know? And so, you know, if you need the two mills, yeah, we can, we can give you that much, but we can't give you more.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
All right.
Got a question, Mark?
Yes, not a question, comment. At our last LCCA meeting, which was Tuesday of last week, the balances of all accounts was a hundred and ten thousand.
Okay.
So, I want you to know that.
On council, just Council on Aging?
Just the Council on Aging.
The balance, the balance?
The balance, total balance of all accounts.
So, you know, and you're, and you're looking at another, well, we've got, what, eight months left?
And there's twenty-seven thousand coming in here on the second.
Yeah.
What did I leave off of there?
Well, if you look at the...
Oh, the Bank of Tuskegee, sorry. Yeah.
So, so, you know, we're, we're not, you're in good shape, I guess, I would say.
Yeah.
But you're going to have to have an influx of cash for eighteen to, to make it, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, you feel really about six months?
I would say six months, if, if you had six months' balance. At the end of the year, I would feel pretty comf, I'd feel real comfortable, I guess, because there's no doubt that we're gonna collect taxes. And I, if the building burns, we have insurance. You know? But if you have a person fall and we get sued, we have insurance for that too, but, you know?
You never know.
You never know, you know? But, yeah, I think, I guess I feel six months is...
Okay, because that was something else that we discussed at our last meeting, so we'll go back and, and bring that back in and go forward that way.
Is there a reason that you budgeted over for this year, what you knew you were receiving, what you budgeted over for eighteen, what you knew you were receiving for seventeen?
That's just what the expenses are.
I'm just taking a look, I, okay, so, the Lincoln County Council on Aging, last year's budget was fifty-one, seven fifty-five, fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five. This year's is fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty. That's a ten percent increase.
Yeah.
Okay, then...
Actually, it's about a four percent increase, I believe, off the top of my head.
I'm sorry, maybe, I'm sorry, I accidentally put the sixteen accrual in, I'm sorry. Is that, does this column, does this belong over here, and that belongs over here, and that belongs over there?
Correct.
This one goes to this line, this one goes, they're just off-centered from the...
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I put the wrong number.
I guess they are, aren't they?
Yeah, so...
Apologize for that, I didn't even notice that.
Okay, but the both senior centers have a decrease in their proposed budgets from last year to this year, so you...
That's because of, okay, like I said, we found places that we could cut expenses, you know?
For the senior centers?
Yeah.
Oh, you did the senior centers' budgets?
They pretty much put them together, and then I've gone over them.
But you said, I'm confused, I'm sorry, you, you did the budget for all of these, or you did...
The senior centers gave me their budgets, and then I, and then I spoke with them about them, and we kind of went over and adjusted anything where we could. And like I said, pretty much what I've come up with here are, you know, the actual expenses. Now, yes, the, the projected for eighteen is more because of inflation, you know, things are gonna go up, you know, the taxes are gonna raise on the monthly bills and the, you know, the price of, yes, or electricity or whatever is, is going to go up.
If the increase happens, you're saying like there's an inflation, so if the increase happens for the Council on Aging, but you're saying there's a decrease for the other two, even with the same expectation that the bills are gonna rise?
Oh, well, some of it is due to the expenses that they had. Here, let me find one here.
What was budget versus the actual?
Yeah, um, that's, okay, like on the Lincoln Senior Center, right, they had budgeted for the telephone, you know, sixteen hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Well, they no longer even have a bill because it's included in with, oh, Council on Aging. It was all bundled in together, so, and the Council on Aging's also went down, okay? There's also repair expenses that they had in here for the year that didn't, they're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna have those expenses again.
Did you just say the Council on Aging's phone bill went down too?
Yeah. By bundle, you know, if you have everything separate, it costs three times more than if you bundle it all together, so by bundling it all together with their telephones and their internet, and the Council on Aging is paying it all, and then the senior center decreased their rent accordingly.
So, if they both got a reduced phone bill by bundling?
Exactly.
But one got their budget increased because of expenses, and one got their budget decreased because of expenses? That's what you're telling me, right?
No, actually, they both went down, as far as the phone bill.
But you're, but the proposed budget is less this year than it was last year for the senior center, but it's more this year for the Council on Aging than it was last year?
Yes, because of, it's the repairs. Let's cross it out.
I'm sorry.
Probably wages and benefits as well?
Those pretty much from sixteen to seventeen, you're talking, correct?
No, I'm saying your two thousand seventeen proposed for the Council on Aging goes up, your two, to eighteen. Your two thousand seventeen proposed from the, both senior centers, from seventeen goes down to eighteen. So, you're actually gonna give a lower percentage of the funds from this mill levy to each senior center, but a higher percentage of the funds. but a higher percentage of the funds from this mill levy to the council on aging? That's what this number tells me.
It's because of the repairs that were done, okay? Like, what, Sylvan had flooring put in, but don't ask me off the top of my head, 'cause I haven't been here long enough to remember what all's been done. It's like, and they had that expense there, but it doesn't carry over to the next year, it's a one-time cost, so that's no longer in there. The senior center had some big thing, and I can't remember what it was.
So what percentage of the total mill levy is going to the council on aging and then to each senior center?
I don't know, I didn't calculate that. You have to calculate it out.
I just find it interesting that the senior centers are making an effort to reduce their costs, even with repairs. I mean, you have repairs every year, depending on what you're doing, but it looks kinda similar. We went from, let's see, 39,102 in 2017, down to 37,000. So let's say that's $2,000 worth of repairs they're not gonna do this year, which is understandable, but I find.
Well, and even so, there's still money budgeted in, to the budget for their repairs.
Oh, so they do get to do repairs?
Yeah, there's money, there'll be money there for repairs, yes.
And they're reducing their costs, well, they're doing a great job.
Yeah, are you thinking I took all the money out for the repairs? No, there's still money in there for repairs, but they had those over and above major expenses that weren't budgeted in there to begin with.
So they still get to do repairs this year, but they found a way to reduce their costs?
Sure. Yes.
But the council on aging is increasing their costs?
Yes.
But they're paying for repairs?
No, the repairs are part of the budget, as it said.
Yeah, if they're major repairs.
When they get the new floor and all that stuff, and the, and the senior center, that money was not budgeted through the senior center, council on aging paid to them.
No, right. Yeah, because the.
But does this 17, I'm saying this.
The senior center has 3,000 budgeted for this year and next, okay? And then the Sylvan.
What I'm asking is, when I look at this 2017 proposed, this 8492, 8,492, and you're saying that the council on aging paid a separate amount for repairs over and above this 8492?
Yeah, the ma-, on the major repairs, they did, yes.
So the senior center received 8492 out of the mill levy, and that doesn't include repairs?
Correct.
I wasn't aware of that, is that, I, I wasn't aware of that.
Yes.
It was on the budget, but I, I wanna make one comment. I have a question on, the cooks are paying $14,000.
The what?
The cooks are paying $14,000. Is that included in the Lincoln Senior Center budget?
Yes.
And it's also included in the LCCA budget, so that's doubling up of.
No.
Yes, it is, because the money goes to the LCCA, and it's dispersed, so it's not, it's not a budget item. It's budgeted in the Lincoln Senior Center for the expense, but you can't budget it on two lines.
It's not.
Yeah, the money actually goes to the council on aging, they disperse it to the senior.
Yeah.
Right, but it can't be budgeted twice, because 52,000 is what wages are.
It's not.
And yes, it's the budget of the Lincoln Senior Center, but it's money that's dispersed out of the LCCA, so it can't be, it can't be considered as an expense on the LCCA.
It isn't.
I don't see it on here.
Well, you have 52,000, that covers the wages and everything.
I'm not sure where you're, where you're talking about, Mike, I really am kinda lost.
Well, I am looking at the.
I don't see anything for a touch on the council on aging, but.
And, uh.
That's the way it was done last year?
And, and it's still in the budget.
But you weren't here last year?
No.
It's still in the budget on the LCCA, which I think is, uh.
Okay, in, in this budget, it's not there.
It's not there.
Well, where's the 53,000 dollars in?
I don't know what 53,000 you're talking about, so I can't tell you where it went.
I'm looking at your 2018 budget, you have 51,755. Where is all that money?
Let me see what you're looking at.
Your summary. And we can get chance to read it very well, I mean, your summary right there is 51,755.
That's the total expenses.
Right, right.
For the council on aging.
Right, but 14,000 of that in the past was.
No, it isn't, it, it's not figured in there, 14,000 is in this 39,000, and it's not in that figure.
That ain't what I see from last year's figures.
Here, where's the other page of it?
I don't have all of it.
Oh, sure, I'll, I'll explain it to you later, okay? But no, it's not in there twice. Oh, I, I hope that answers your question, but it's, it's not there twice.
I will see if that wager.
I don't see it.
Uh huh. Because, yeah, the wages for the council on aging are simply for the council on aging, and what's at the senior center is for the senior center.
I guess my only concern is that we're having the senior centers reduce their budgets to fit within this lowered mill levy, but the council on aging is inflating its budget, and it's pushing over the mill levy as far as what's been decided by the commission. So that's a concern to me.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, although some of those expenses went over to the council on aging. Yeah, I mean, at this point, I can't really say what could change there, you know? Because basically, all of the expenses there are fixed expenses. I mean, there's just, I don't know what you would cut out.
I don't know where they're running on their proposed budget for this year either, they've got eight more months to go. So you don't know what their actual expenses are gonna be for 17.
Are you on target with your budget now, for the quarter, or?
Uh.
Do you do this?
It would have to be real close.
Right now, they're 27,000 to the year.
Yeah.
Well, the proposed.
Like, uh, so they have annual expenses that they pay at the beginning of the.
Yeah.
That's it, yeah.
Stuff like that.
Uh huh.
I'm getting the proposed budget for the council on aging for next year is taking up 54% of the mill levy. So you're basically giving more than half to the council and less than half to the two senior centers.
Well, keep in mind then, though, too, that the Lincoln Senior Center is also funded by, uh, Flint Hills. So they're, they're also getting money there, because that's, yeah, that's where their meals and the rest of the wages and all of that come from. And I cannot give you that amount, I do not, I do not have that to, to tell you what comes from them. So there is, there would actually be considerably more going into the Lincoln Senior Center. Any other questions for this?
I guess my last comment would be looking at the council on aging budget, this 54% of the total mill levy. In 2017 to 2018, the, the biggest increase is, is under employee. I mean, your office, your office expenses are only going up by barely over $1,000. So the rest of that is all.
I was, you're looking at the council on aging?
Employee expenses. Yeah, yeah. I mean, 'cause you're basically coming here and telling us that you've over budgeted, so I'm looking at where that comes from, 'cause everything was reduced, except for a little bit on the council on aging's expense, office expenses, which is about $1,000. So the rest of that inflated.
So what are you saying is over budgeted?
Well, the, the, I mean, you're using 54% of the budget for the council on aging, and the biggest jump there is under employee expenses, not under, you were saying it's because of inflation with office expenses, but that accounts for a total of $1,000.
But you're gonna see the, the, the same thing all the way through?
No, the others.
You're gonna see that increase all the way through?
Right, but you're just saying that they're not gonna do as, as much of an expensive repair the next year, so that's why the senior center's got to consolidate a little bit. I just think we need to work within our means all the way around, and not just, you know, overinflate so that we can request more money.
Yeah, but I wouldn't say that anything there is overinflated. I mean, I, I believe that that's pretty accurate as to what those expenses will be. Does that make sense?
Um, have you ever done a comparison with other counties?
No.
Well, I'm in the process of doing that for multiple situations, and I think it'd be interesting for you to look at that and see how other counties do it, because there is a lot more efficiency that happens, and, you know, we're looking at a, a mill levy that was specifically designed for something where it's getting less than 50% of, you know, the total money to do that purpose. So it'd be interesting, I think, for you to look around and see how other counties do that.
Okay. Hey, thank you. Anything else? Alrighty, appreciate your time and your efforts.
Would you hand that to Dawn, you leave, or did you give her a copy?
I didn't give her one.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have something, girl?
Yeah, I have a question. We give money to the older people in this county, we wanna keep young people in this county. You know, the young need to be bitchin' at us old guys. We supposedly have the money in the county, they're trying to make a living and be a part of this county. Just, I, has anybody thought of this, you know? The young maybe need as much help as the old.
I'm not sure how you funnel it to them.
I don't know how you do that, but think about it. I'm not so sure funding us old ones is, is the smartest thing in the world to do. We should have our money by now, we made a living. The young are trying to make a living and become part of the community.
He's right, when people go off to college, they don't come back here. Jobs, they don't get jobs.
If you develop any suggestions, please bring them to the table.
Steve, Steve Snyder?
Yeah.
Did you, have you seen Michael?
I did, I talked to him on the phone, he's 20 minutes fine, so.
Okay, alright.
He said you guys discussed it.
Yes, okay, I, I didn't know whether, see whether you'd make contact or not.
Yeah, I didn't see anything.
Okay, we signed, you need to sign.
Whoa, man. Don't destroy the place. Sorry.
Was the wall a little further away than you thought?
This, this, this.
Yes.
Why, yes it would be.
Yeah, I think I'm not the government, my job's hard.
Do they just provide these to us for nothing? They just send these out for nothing to the counties? That's really nice.
Service, they provide, you know, goes out to all counties.
Yeah.
It's a yearly term.
Yeah, that's really nice.
I don't know when to start it for sure.
Well, it's hard to get that kind of information calculated and takes a research center.
That's actually much more work.
I like that, students take the research and then they have.
We can't, I'm joking, I'm joking. No, but I'm just, well, up here, we're not. Oh my gosh. I thought we started. You know, we don't have really big things to suggest. I always thought that.
Really?
Ah, of course. That's what it was. No, seven were not.
No, our locals own other places.
There was a green down right there in the alley, it closed off now, but it used to be just.
Oh, that's.
Go, go girls.
It's fine. Could've just let me own do that, exactly. You could, I could be rough enough to do that.
Well, actually, what's interesting is what, I was. It's because she did not. She's in the eyes. So the old ones, I mean, I can walk down the street and see. They are recognized because they are. I wish, I wish, I wish I had that. Whatever it takes.
Look at that.
This is really worth the reading. District board costs.
Wish, David, that's in there. I couldn't bring it up. It's kind of liberating. My honeydew list. What glow in your honey? Just kidding, just kidding. It is funny.
If I sixty-two percent. Oh no, it's raised sixty-two percent. No, yeah, great. Change, but it goes. Like, it's a weird inflection, like, there's that, and then down, up, and then way up again.
Is that, how was it, how was it? It was a transition.
Dad was a lot be careful.
Those are her exact words. Thank you. And as, as in, she's got more than she can display. And the boxes in it, basically, basically, she can't park that much, she's got. Oh yeah, she, this is her daughter, she just needs to start her investing. But there are lots of places. Thank you for noticing.
I assume he wants us to call him? No, we might have.
Sorry, thank you.
I needed a stretch in here.
Really?
Wait a minute.
Oh, boy. Oh, did you? I remember there was one in. Oh!
So then my daughter doesn't. What is it? Which is amazing. I started to, and I would say. The polish, that's always their way. You know, you know, it's.
Why took so long?
You got that one? I collect the small clients. But do you want to say?
Morning, morning, morning. Wait, Callexis comes back.
Okay. Oh, okay. Good. Right. Try to do it that way.
Okay, welcome back. John and Kristen are here.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we are here to talk about the flooring citations from the deficiency reports in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. We're not getting complete confirmation from the state that they are not going to come into the building and cite us or what they may do if the correction or the deficiencies weren't corrected. They're not saying that they're going to do anything. So there's some uncertainty there and kind of like a monkey on your back. You don't know what they're gonna do and they've been proven that they can do whatever they want to do. So I pulled out the portion of the deficiencies for that flooring and went through them. I have to go back and get specifically the rooms because they cite them by resident number on the survey. But what I concluded was there are seven entryways in seven different rooms and then four bathrooms that were cited. And then the tiles between the east and west side where the fire doors are. We have since replaced those tiles. There is a hatch that goes underneath the building where those tiles are located at. And if there's a problem, those tiles are removed and to get to the hatch, there's not, it's not. You, it, it's a process to get underneath of there. So I believe what's been fixed there, basically, we, we took some tiles from the industrial hallway area and brought out to the main hallway area that they cited. Because those tiles, those were the only tiles we had left to match. And then we relayed a section that's the entryway to the dietary entrance with different tile. So that that way we can have tile that matched and was the same height. So I think that one's fixed, but it's seven entryways and four bathrooms. And then from last year's survey, we have the kitchen. And that would be in, mainly what was cited was the dishwashing area. So back in two thousand five, when we were cited for that, actually, it was two thousand, yeah, it was two thousand five. I came in October of two thousand five. They were just completing the flooring project in the same location, in the dishwashing area. Obviously, that's an area that gets lots of water. And that flooring, you know, has a hard time holding up for long periods of time. So it's lasted at least that long, but it cost us about sixteen hundred dollars to replace at the time. It requires pulling the dishwasher out and the cabinets and basically out our operation for a good day. The rooms that were originally, when we got quotes, Ritter out of Salina, he is the only one we could find to do tile work in our bathrooms. We had two others lined up and as soon as they figured out that the building was old and they were gonna have to do some different things to manage the tile there, they were unwilling to do it, so they kept giving us names. So Ritter Tile is who came out and did that work. And so they came and did these bids for us for these rooms. And to replace the, all the, all the flooring in the room was about a thousand to twelve hundred dollars. So at the time, we were talking seven entryways and four bathrooms. I looked here and it does not look like any of them are. The bathrooms that were cited don't also have the bedroom cited, so it's either one or the other in, in the rooms.
So it's eleven total is what you're saying?
Mm-hmm. So John and I went through the building, was that last week? And, and John thought us some ideas of maybe, since it was entryways that they were focused on, that maybe we could just do the entryway for those rooms for the time being instead of spending a full twelve hundred dollars to redo the whole room. We know the, one of their objectives was that the floor or the tiles are either cracked or they are a different color in the, in the entryway of the rooms. So if we made it look as though the entryway is supposed to have a different color tile, then maybe that they, that would make them happy. And so we thought maybe going that route. But we would like to move forward and get those rooms and the kitchen fixed. Originally, the bids would have been between ten to twelve thousand dollars. We are hoping we can significantly reduce that by doing only a portion of the rooms. We also have that linoleum for the bathrooms. I, I don't know if we have any extra of that, but we might, Greg's looking into that for me, that we might be able to utilize that. So that might be a cost savings as well.
I met with the state in Topeka, Kansas Department on Aging and Disability Services. And they said, we really need to get going on something here. Because they said if, if the surveyor comes back in and we show no action, then we'll be in trouble. So I think at the minimum, we need to do this right here.
Make it terribly cheaper to find, so.
So are you, in the kitchen, you're just thinking of doing that one area?
Just the dishwashing area again.
To where that shred piece is?
Yeah, right. There's two of those. There's two strips and it would go to the furthest strip from, from the west wall.
To at least eliminate one.
Mm-hmm.
Now, like, some of those entry into the room, they're actually a fall hazard.
Right.
So we need to get that fixed so the residents don't fall.
Maybe it's your attempt, tongue attack, Ritter.
Yeah.
Are those the bids?
No, this is just my survey. I've moved offices twice, so some of that stuff has gone downstairs. But it's, it's a different kind of bid we're asking for at this time. The thought process back when we initially got the bids was that we'll do these rooms and eventually the rest of the building. So that way you're getting nice flooring that can match with the entire facility, but kind of a different mindset potentially right now. It's just a matter of let's get it done and do it as inexpensively as we can.
Is Ritter the company that did that new bathroom?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Sounds like a good plan to me.
William, need a motion, Don, to move forward on this?
You don't wait till you get a price?
Okay.
All right, bring a price.
Okay.
If it was called a price or something.
Okay.
Okay. What else you got for us today?
I think that's it.
That's it? Let's see, the lease expires next Monday, right?
We are continuing to talk about our company purchasing the company. So we're making progress there.
Do you wanna put me on the, put us on the schedule for Monday, Don?
Yeah, but you'll need to call and make it up on the.
Okay. Okay. I will do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
That's all we have for us. Okay. We need to talk with Johnson and Campbell sometime, or somebody does. How do you wanna handle that?
I don't have a phone or anything down there.
Yeah, I know, that's, we can't do it on speakerphone here, so.
He just wants an update.
Wants an update, I guess.
You should have asked John Grace if he's talked to him, I suppose, but.
Do we, um.
I don't know why one of us or Don couldn't call and kind of tell him we're out. Whatever, I have, you think, other than what we told him before?
I would tell him next Monday is going to be more fruitful for information for him than today.
Okay. Do you want her to do it, you want one of us to do it?
Do it as the chairman.
Do you wanna do it?
I can do it.
You're the chairman.
Anything else today?
You might, you know, John Grace indicated that if he did his deal, he would do it.
Yeah. I'll, I'll base it. I'll base it.
He's a word.
Maybe ask him if John has contacted him because I think he told me that he had, that that was his weak field.
I listened. I'd assume when he told us that he would, you know, hire him to do his deal.
So anything else?
I think he goes.
Don, do you have anything for us? Done all everything you want me to do today? All right, then I will adjourn this commission until eight o'clock, many mornings.